Hello, everyone. This is Deja James with.
Leighton Jones. Hello, hello, hello.
Hey, and we're so excited. Y'all might notice, we got some new digs. So I'm really excited to be here with my bestie here.
I know. It feels good. It feels good. The new space is nice. Shout out to the space.
Shout out. Thank you so much to the Pod Hub. Shout out to them. Um, I am so happy that we're using another black owned business in the city of Buffalo to help support. There's so many young creatives in the area that can help. And um, I've been talking to like some colleagues and and people like you like about media advocacy. And I know you've been like doing, doing social media and all the media stuff for our city. So um, and I wanted to get into that a little bit. But just so excited to like have a new platform, trying to get this information accessible to people because we do a lot. But if people don't know about it, then what's the point? You know what I mean? And we gotta compete with the other, you know, they got podcasts about dating and all this other stuff and you know.
Political education is important.
Right. And so we need to talk about that in a fun setting too, in a laid back way with each other.
And I think that like, that's one of the things that I appreciate about OCAB is that we bring a different type of like not seriousness about something very serious, like election season and voting and politics is like, sometimes it's a heavy, like hard topic for people to talk about. But I think in the space of making public awareness and allowing everyone to be educated on these issues that are real.
Yeah.
These are people centered politics, right?
Right.
So people need to know about it.
Exactly. And I think like, the system has done a good job at making us feel like we don't have no power over it anyway. We, but that's really, it's a disinformation campaign to make us disinvested. But you know, as long as more people like us are having those conversations that I think are more accessible in a way that we want to digest, because I can't say, I mean, I do listen to NPR, but I realize that's not for everybody.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? So like, what are, what other ways are we making digestible information that is for us? Um, and our government works for us. And so how are we holding them accountable? And how are we engaging in that system?
Yeah.
Important. Yeah.
I agree. And I have to say that like, us being two younger people of color, it changes the type of crowd and audience that engages with the information that we put out, right?
Yeah.
And so if it was a white person who was putting this information out, it would be tending to a different audience, just naturally. Because we're just naturally biased as humans. And so I, I think it's very important for us as individuals to be in spaces like this and to take up space.
Exactly.
Because we often don't.
We don't. And I think people do think, and like leftist spaces is progressive spaces especially, like have in the past been taken up by kind of like white, you know, social leaders or different things like that, even though we've always had our own spaces, civil rights and different things like that. But it's, it's been seen as separate when, when those rights are really like congruent.
In tandem, right?
And so like, but, but we have to be given, one, we have to be given the agency and given those leadership positions, which has been a problem for the most part, which I very much appreciate both of our organizations for uplifting young black people like us to be these voices. Because I think that's something that people don't talk about is we have to be given the platforms and the opportunities and the resources also. And you know, we're lucky that we have organizations that are investing in us. Um, but I think as we as leaders exemplify, you know, how important this is and what traction it gets, then I'm hoping that sees more opportunities for people to come behind us, in front of us, on the side of us, whatever. I don't care.
Yeah, I think like, especially since we've been in positions like this, I've seen more diversity, especially in terms of like people who come towards to the forefront now and say, I want to have a voice at that mic.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I want to have my voice heard. Or even if I don't want to say it, I'll have my friend say it. I'll send it to one of my friends and I'll have them come to the space and share their experience. Because oftentimes, like, we feel that our experience is not worthy of being heard. And baby, I promise you, you have been through it and so has many others. And you have a community out here and we're here to support you.
Exactly.
This in, in the spaces that we are in, we're here to not only support you, but protect your rights.
Absolutely.
And allow you to know that you have them.
Absolutely. So getting into that.
Yeah.
And what we're here to talk about today, we're going to talk about a few different things, especially with this election year being what it is. Next year is going to be an important election also. So what is the work of our city particularly in these years, but like also in general? So that people know, like, what is our city? How are you engaging people right now into different systems so that they can be empowered to, you know what I mean? Make some change. Yeah.
Yeah. And also, um, so I'll introduce myself, right? And so my name is Leighton Jones. I am the Communications Coordinator for Our City Action Buffalo and Our City Buffalo. They're sister organizations. The C four organization is OCAB, which is Our City Action Buffalo, which is the shirt I have on. And we are able to mantra what we want. You understand? We want to build a city that is for everyone, where everyone has rights. Okay? And I really appreciate the work that Our City Action Buffalo does, because not only do we engage in issue based politics, but we also are in a, able to engage in endorsements. So we're able to endorse politicians and be a part of a different space that I think like grassroots organizations aren't necessarily able to participate in, especially as C three organizations, right?
Exactly.
And so that's where Our City Buffalo comes in as our C three organization, as our policy platform. So not only do we think that is important to take action and to go out there and vote and be on the ground, we also think it's important for us to create policies that will be long lasting and like actually leave an impact in our community, right?
Yeah.
And so what Our City Action Buffalo is, it's a member based organization that champions movement politics, people centered politics and engage in ethos of co-governance, right? We work to change systems and institutions to win campaigns for racial, economic and social justice for all Buffaloanians. And I'm not just saying that, this is something we truly mean.
Yeah.
We stand by our word when we say these things, right? And so you can check us out on social media. You can go on our Instagram, which is Our City Action Buffalo. You can go on our Twitter, our, our website. We have a bunch of events coming up. There's a lot of things going on. But I want you to introduce yourself as well, because this is a new space, baby.
I know, I know. And I'm like, we could just gab all day. So I didn't introduce myself, but what's up, y'all? This is Deja with Partnership for the Public Good. I am the Director of Policy Advancement and Media with Partnership for the Public Good, which is an organization and a think tank, actually, a 501(c)(3) organization that does policy research and people, community based advocacy initiatives. Um, and we have this thing called the Community Agenda Process that we do every year, where it's like a pitch competition, if people have seen those before for businesses, but we pitch policy ideas from community members. Um, and then you're able to vote in this democratic process and we create an agenda to change city level government, state level government, or even county level government, um, to create like our city, um, a better Buffalo for all Buffaloanians.
Yes.
And so that's the key. And there's many, many organizations. We are a partner network of 350 organizations, including Our City Buffalo.
Yes.
Um, and so you're going to see as the show progresses, and if you've heard any of the past episodes, partners of ours and community members that um, are working to do this. I think that there's a lot more people doing this work than people know about.
Recognize, yes.
And, and you know, when they give out the awards or they do the different stuff, you know, it's not always seen. Um, but yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes and I'm hoping this is a platform where we can talk about that real work.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we need that space. So.
For real, for real.
Yeah, no, really. So we're gonna be real here. Um, like Leighton said, please check out their social media, because they really do stand on business and they really be about it. And anything like that you need an update on, you could probably find it on Our City Buffalo's page. So please check out their Instagram especially. It's one of my new favorite pages. It's so funny too. So I'll be cracking up.
The communications team that we've built, and mind you, this has been a work in progress, right?
Yeah.
It's been over, I think we have existed at least like, I want to say like seven years now.
Yeah.
But the growth has been seen in the past four years, right?
Right.
And the communications team has been building, especially this year.
Yeah.
And we have like eight different individuals.
Yeah.
Who like just went on our website and applied to be on our communications team.
That's amazing.
And got vetted. And they've been, it's such a sense of community.
Yeah.
We now meet in person bi-weekly, bi-weekly. And it's just a, it's a real space where like residents of the community is able to come to a meeting and speak about politics that will benefit them.
Absolutely.
That they will have like a real like attachment to.
Right.
Because this is your city.
Right.
And you have every right to it.
Right. Absolutely. And I think that's so like, for me, re, because I've been doing like policy work and organizing for a few years and I was in that background thing, trying to get the meetings with the elected officials, trying to do this, trying to do that. I still do some of that stuff, but I, I found that like I was reignited into the work when I did start doing more communications based, like trying to do media advocacy. That was where I really like felt that on fire. One, because I get to be creative and anywhere. You know what I mean? I need to scratch that itch a little bit. Like I can't just be sitting here behind a desk, calling, writing emails. I can't. But.
It gets tired.
And, and that's important too. And policy briefs and papers and all that boring stuff is important. But at the end of the day, like, once again, if people don't know what we're doing or aren't educated about their own systems or their own government, or who's governing them, then what's the point in us doing any of this? And so um, finding new and creative ways to engage people into the political system, especially as we know, like, social media has been the future and present for a while now. I think, you know, people were like holding off on that, um, or felt like social media was like a fun, unserious space. Where, where we couldn't like bring things like this.
It was like a facade. Like you go there and you talk about self-care and you talk about like all the things that people don't have.
No, like fake money, fake vacations, fake, all this other stuff. Cool. But like, let's really talk about what's going on. Like I know we're trying to use this phone as an escape, but like, it's bleeding in now. So like, let's talk about solutions. Because we ain't gonna be able to just be on the screen, like ignoring what's going on outside anymore.
Can't ignore it.
We can't.
It's coming to our doorstep.
It's literally, like even to the phone, they trying to be a TikTok and all of that, like all this scrolling y'all doing.
Like, is freedom of speech not still a thing?
I guess not if.
Well, you know, that's, that's what we're here to talk about, right? We're talking about rights. And so let's get into it a little bit, right?
Yeah.
So OCAB is now really sponsoring and, well, not sponsoring, but pushing out information on what Proposal One is.
Yeah.
And if you don't know, Proposal One will be on your ballot this November 5th. And if you're going to vote early, which is early voting started October 26th, you should have seen Proposal One. In every county, Proposal One will be on the front of your ballot. But that will differ throughout the state, because each county gets to pick where proposals go on the ballot, which I also didn't know.
That's where you just taught me something.
It's also like very democratic. Like I really appreciate that each county gets to select where um, something goes on their ballot for their residents.
Yeah.
Like I like that idea, right? So let's talk about what Proposal One is. What do you know about Proposal One?
Well, I've definitely seen mainly reproductive rights protections. I think I was driving down Main Street the other day in front of Canisius and I saw a whole gaggle of students. And they were, you know, holding signs and I'm thinking, oh, you know, what, what causes it today? Is it Palestine? Is it whatever? Not in a bad way, but like, there's so many things going on in the world. You're kind of desensitized to even like, when you see crowds now. And there was some young ladies and you know, my window is down because it's still warm. Thank you, Jesus. And she was like, do you, do you want a plan B for you or your friends? And I was like, oh, and she's like, we're trying to promote Proposition One. We're trying to say that we should be able to do this, that women in New York State should be protected. And we don't want federal government to be able to impact or change the safeguard that we are the safe haven of New York State.
As we should.
Um, and so that was, that's when I really got introduced. I think that was like a week or two ago.
Got you.
Um, and so that's what I've heard about Prop One myself, personally. Um, and I've seen a couple of other things, but I knew you were going to come and explain it fully to me today. So I was just like, I don't gotta read on it. Leighton got me.
So for ballot language, right?
Yeah.
This proposal would protect against unequal treatment based on ethnicity, national origin, age, disability and sex, including sexual orientation, gender identity and pregnancy. It also protects against unequal treatment based on reproductive healthcare and autonomy, like you just said, right? So a vote yes would mean that you're putting these protections into the New York State Constitution. And the vote no leaves it out of the New York State Constitution, which means that it is in the hands of these new politicians or of leadership, right? They can come out and say, okay, we want to ban abortion and they can do so.
Yeah.
And so it's important for us to get this embedded in our law, because New York State is considered a safe haven for so many. It's considered a safe haven for people, for people who are displaced, like migrants.
Absolutely.
It's considered a safe haven for people in the LGBTQ plus community, right?
Absolutely.
People, I, I came here, one, as a migrant, two, as a LGBTQ plus person. And when I tell you that I know what it's like to not have my rights protected, coming from a society where it's illegal to be gay. It's illegal to be a part of that community. I could get either killed or put in prison just for being me, right? And so to come to the US has been.
Yeah.
It's been a lot to take in, right? I came into a different culture. I didn't know what freedom was, right? And so to experience when I first held a man's hand in public and feel that, oh my God, no one's gonna hurt me? Like, this is real?
Yeah.
I have, I had to take that moment in.
Yeah.
And come to the realization, when I went to my first pride, excuse me? Like people celebrate this? So this is what New York State stands for for me, right? And so it would be like another blessing to have this proposal put into the constitution. Not only because I'm a part of this community, but because women deserve to have rights to their own bodies.
Right.
Like, why is the government trying to control what women do?
Right.
And since when has this been such a damning issue, right? Like if we care about abortions, let's also care about um, the children in school.
Children's school, children foster care, children, listen.
Let's care about public assistance, right? Let's not just care about when the baby's in the oven. Let's care about when it's outside of the oven. Okay? So I think that it's very important for us to want to dissect what this language is. Proposal One was also New York State Equal Rights Act, right?
Yeah.
And so it's important for us to put this information out there, because people don't know what Proposal One is.
No.
How do we know what Proposal One is? You can't look at a ballot and say, oh, I'm gonna just vote yes for Proposal One.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And so it's important for us as individuals, as organizations, to mantra what politics should be. And that is public awareness.
Right.
Giving people the information that they need to go in that booth or to go in that ballot box and tick what they need to tick.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know for a fact, the first time I voted, like, I was young. I didn't know what was, I thought I was just voting for a president. Like there were other things on the ballot and I was like, wait, I was supposed to know about other stuff before I came in here?
Yeah.
And you know what I mean? Yeah. And so it's important, like, I'm hoping this gets out to people, but once you do hear this, really understand that it's, you have to seek information also.
Yes.
Um, and I think that's, that's the other thing. And it doesn't have to be something really difficult, like just Google. There's so many organizations like Our City Buffalo or, you know, a lot of other think tanks like mine or different things, federal, state, whatever, that are there to inform you about your rights and what, what information is out there. And so simple Google searches about like, what do I need to know for this November, you know, fifth election or whatever? And then you'll see a plethora of topics. Look it up. Read up on something really quick. Watch a few short videos. Like, we're trying to make all type of different media so that if it's, reading is not your thing, we can, you probably could find a 30 second explainer video. You probably could find a YouTube video. Whatever your platform is, medium, whatever, we all learn differently. Find it and, and stick to it. I think that that's really important. Um.
I really appreciate that, like, we have different forums like that, right? So I think one, with PPG and OCAB, we put out visuals.
Yeah.
That's one.
Yeah.
We have podcasts, that's two. So people not only are able to see us visually on social media, but they're able to hear us. And sometimes like they can see these videos on YouTube. So that's also a different way that people can engage with this information, right?
Absolutely.
And so we also have like public forums where you can come to an event.
Yeah.
If you don't want to do this research on your phone, we host events like this where you can come and learn.
And ask questions, you know, because I know sometimes I'm like, okay, well, I just got this information, but I'm still confused. Or I still need clarification here. Or what does the New York State Constitution say? What does that do? What does it mean? Like, come ask, you know what I mean? Um, I think there's opportunity for that. Put it in the comments. I know like we'll answer. So I just think that that's so important. And for Prop One specifically, it's so huge that it's in the constitution, because then it affects any other law that has to be or can be created or amended. That's the thing. Like, it's not just its own standalone law. It impacts the whole thing. Anything in the future, past, present, has to then abide by this amendment. And so that's why it's important to have constitutional guidelines along with local laws or jurisdictions or, you know, different things like that.
And it's clear and evident that the residents of New York State, not only Buffalo, but New York State, agree that this should be in the constitution, right? A clear majority of New Yorkers support both abortion and LGBTQ rights. A recent Sienna poll found that 64% of New York votes or voters would support a state constitution amendment to protect abortion rights. So with that being said, that shows me that the sense of community and acknowledges that it's not just me that feels this way, but there's a plethora of people who also share community with me in this oldness that I feel that women have rights to their own bodies.
Absolutely.
And it's just that.
And it's about choice. Like I think most New Yorkers, like even if you, you would personally do or do not do something, I think it's just, we all agree that we don't want to infringe on the rights of someone else who may want to make that choice. And I think that that's what really is key and important, is that you're not voting whether or not you want to do something or you would do something. You're voting on whether or not you feel like it's your right or the government states right to take that away from someone else.
Yeah.
I think that's really important.
And like, okay, let's, I saw this fact.
Yeah.
On the Buffalo News, like maybe three days ago.
Yeah.
And it says, if Texas can pass a statewide Equal Rights Act, which it did in 1972, so can we. This is New York State. What are we saying? The, the, the bar is Texas?
Yeah.
Please.
We can do it. Yeah.
No questions about that.
Absolutely.
Let's make it happen, babes.
We're gonna do it.
Vote yes to Prop One? Is that a yes?
I think it is a yes. I think everybody's like nodding their head as they watch this. Yeah.
So some other things that are on the ballot, right? The other day, we were at a forum for the Buffalo Board of Education.
Yeah.
And so I think we should talk about that a little bit, because um, they will be governing over a billion dollars, right?
Did you know the city's school budget is over one, not million, billion with a B?
More than the Buffalo Common Council budget is. Like, the school system kind of pays the Buffalo Common Council.
And I know y'all seen these schools, like, not all are created equal. I'mma say that.
Well. That's why we need the right people to be on the board, to advocate for the children, especially the Buffalo Public Schools, right?
Yeah.
Um, I've seen, there's so many facts and statistics that exist about the Buffalo Public Schools and all of them are like, they're pretty damning.
Yeah.
And it mainly affects people of color.
Absolutely.
Who goes to public schools? Who can afford to go to a private school?
Yeah.
Or a charter school? Like, let's really talk about it. You understand what I'm saying? And I, I feel, and I think everyone would agree to this, that an educated society benefits everyone.
Absolutely.
It doesn't just benefit parents.
Absolutely.
Like, children going to school and learning, it doesn't just benefit people who are like investing in kids.
No.
It benefits everyone.
It betters our economies. It betters our neighborhoods. It does. We, like, if you don't invest in young people, that's a problem. That's a very big problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so little information about what will be on your ballots this November 5th as well is there are three at large seats available and six candidates running, right? I'll say the candidates' names, because I would like for you to have heard them before.
Yeah, let's run through them. Roll call.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
So this Rozia Hill, she's a woman. Um, she is the founder and executive director of Every Bottom Covered, which is a nonprofit organization that like provides diapers and goods to low income families. Love that.
Yep.
We also have candidate Adriana Zilich. Her background, she is an attorney and co-chair of the District Special Education Parents Advocacy Committee. Love that as well.
Absolutely.
Then we have a man. His name is Ed Speedo or Spital. And I also conducted interviews with each of these candidates. So you can go on Our City Action Buffalo's page on Instagram and find them or Facebook. They're available. I did a quick interview and it basically asked them, why should we vote for them? And with knowing that the Buffalo Board of Education will be governing over a billion dollars, why should we trust them with that amount of money? You know what I mean? Like, let's get down to it. What type of finance background do you have?
Yeah, putting that in their hands. Yeah. They need to know something. Yeah.
So Ed Speedo, he is also a candidate. He's, his background is, he's the president of District Parent Coordinating Council. And he is the former co-chair of Special Education Parents Advisory Education. Sorry.
Yeah.
He's also a father of two Buffalo Public School students, um, for those who need to know that.
Yeah.
Sorry. Um, the other candidate is also a woman. There's three women running, which I love. I love when women get into politics, because it shows me that they are a part of leadership.
Yeah.
And they should be. They should have always been.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
And so this is also why I think you should vote yes on Prop One.
Yeah.
So this candidate, her name is Janita Everhart, which I'm sure you've heard Everhart before. Her background is, she is the street team ambassador for 43 North and the former program director for Buffalo Federation of Neighborhood Centers. And she is also the sister of Mastin District Common Councilwoman, Zanetta Everhart. That's where you've heard that name. We love that.
We love that. Come on, families uplifting community. Yeah, we love that. Yeah.
The last two candidates that I will speak of, I left them for last specifically because they have been on the board before. Um, so they are incumbents. And so we always feel the need to put those who have not ran before a seat at the front, because their names are known already. They already have an advantage.
Absolutely.
And so let's give new people an opportunity, because I do think there should be term limits in all things, in all parts of the government. This candidate, his name is Terrence Heard. He's an incumbent, as I said. He is the founder, president of Friends for a Better Buffalo Org. It's a 501(c)(3). He's also a member. He's also been a member of the board since 2019. The last candidate that I will speak on, his name is Larry Scott. He's also an incumbent. And his background is, he's a certified school psychologist. And he's been, also been a member of the board since 2019, cited for passing legislation. And we love people who pass legislation, because one of the issues I've always had with the Buffalo Common Council is that they don't pass enough legislations.
They get a little stuck.
Are a body that should be doing that.
Right.
Let's, let's do so.
That sounds about right, you know, but sometimes people need a little push, a little nudging.
And that's why we're here, right?
Yeah.
To hold them accountable.
Yeah.
As residents, I know, politics can be draining. It can be straining. It can be stressing.
Yeah.
But it's important for you to use your voice, to make your voice heard, to have them hold their foot to the fire. A lot of times, they have given us promises that they're gonna do this and they're gonna do that. They're gonna be in the community. They're gonna host all these events. They're gonna hold these forums for you to come and give your suggestions. And we find out that they tend not to.
Absolutely.
And when they do such, hold them accountable to that.
Absolutely.
And this is another reason why I think Our City Action Buffalo does its thing sometimes, because they sign a waiver with us, right? And whenever we endorse a candidate, they have to commit to everything that they said they would do. And if you don't, you're getting called out.
The comment for you.
Real bad.
No, but I want to circle back, because you were talking about how there's a lot of new blood going on lately and a lot of different races and elections. And so I know, especially with the way our federal election is right now, like a lot of people feel stuck in a sense of like, I have no choices. My vote doesn't matter. I don't have any options anyway. They're gonna do whatever they want anyway. And especially in local elections, I do not feel that that is true. In Buffalo, in the past, it definitely has been.
Yeah.
But in recent years.
Given himself the boot, sorry.
I'mma professionally keep my mouth shut. Um, but what I will say is that people, it's really important that you engage now because there is a change coming. And we need to be prepared. A lot of people are unhappy with a lot of things, and we have an opportunity. Exactly. And we have an opportunity now to do something about it and to get people in office that will do something about it. And I think a lot of people don't believe that that can happen anymore, but there are a lot of people who, just like you, feel that way. And they said, you know what, I'm gonna be the one that steps up to the plate and runs for this office, whatever office it is, to be that person. And so whatever your politics are, whatever changes you want, there is a candidate out there that understands you, that wants to hear from you, meet with these people, they hold meetings. They're going to block club meetings, they're going to the fairs, they're going to the little markets, the farmers markets and stuff. Go out there and tell them what you want. That's, that's their job, like.
What do you want them to invest in? What next could there be for Buffalo, right? We're going into AI, we're going into the thirty-three might be in a thing, might not be being a thing. Like, there's so many changes happening in Buffalo at this time.
Even affordable housing, apartments, developments going up.
Housing is not great right now. I can't, I can't buy a home yet.
At all. The median income in Buffalo is around forty-one thousand dollars. And the houses are upwards of getting to two fifty to three hundred for a ranch that used to be like ninety-nine thousand dollars. Because I just saw on NBC News last night that we're a climate haven and people should move here. They keep doing that. Please stop.
Also say that, like, Buffalo is a refugee hotspot. That so many refugees come here, and it's such a welcoming community to that.
And I will say, I'm not saying that in a way of like, we don't have space. That's not what I'm saying. There are so many empty lots, vacant land, development opportunities. We do need to develop. I don't wanna say I am not anti-development. But we need to be making sure that it is affordable for the people that live here. As I said, the average income is forty-one thousand dollars, so what are we doing about it? Either we gotta raise people's salary and make more job opportunities? Or, and/or be building affordable housing, and that's just the fact of the matter.
I mean, homelessness is at a sky high at this point, even in this city. And while I bring this up, while I bring up displacement, R City Buffalo, in partnership with PPG, actually, it will be hosting the Anti-Displacement Summit this November sixteenth, Saturday. It starts at ten AM, and it will be hosted at Buffalo State University. It's in collaboration this year with Africana Studies. And I have been like extremely excited about this collaboration with Buffalo State specifically and Africana Studies because last year we had our first intern from there. And she did this presentation to her entire group and faculty. And it showed the work that O Cab does on a small scale and a large scale. And it shows the amount of politics that is going on that people aren't aware of. None of these students were aware of the thirty-three, were aware of the hostel, were aware of the budget. Like, there's so many things that are happening on a regular basis. There's always so many moving parts. And yes, it's hard for you to keep up, but sometimes it's that one thing that you click on social media and you like, say, okay, this is one issue that I'm going to pinpoint. This is one issue that's important to me, and this is one organization I can support. Even if it's a donation, even if it's a like, if it's a share, whatever it is, it's helpful because you're sharing information with people who might not know, but who might get invested and might do something about it. And so that's why it's important not to keep this information to yourself. That's why we're here. Giving this information to you.
Awareness is just as important, like uplifting, resharing, reposting, it's just as important. You don't have to be the one leading the protest, laying down, getting arrested, you know, there's people that'll do that. What you wanna do is important to any type of contribution. And so I think people get scared off of too doing something because they feel like I have to do this in this certain way. And you don't.
And that's the benefit of volunteering, right? You're volunteering your time, so you're volunteering whatever resource you have. Whenever I'm introducing someone to O Cab, I tell them, come as you are. It sounds like a church thing, but I'm taking it very serious versus where the church judges you and sends you to hell. Tell you to come as you are, that simply means come with the politics that you have. Yes, we might disagree and agree or come to an okay solution, and we don't have to. That's not for me to do with you. You're coming to give me your time and your effort, and you're not giving it to me. You're giving it to your community. So it would really be nice if, like, any type of experience that you have, right? It could be tech, it could be background work, it could be social media, it could be website, eh, whatever it is, it's helpful. You could literally have a space and you said, I wanna donate this space to whatever event.
And we always need space. We're always, especially in community, we're trying to figure out places, the whole. Other thing I'll say that's underrated, if you have a catering business or some food, and you wanna donate some food to a community, to a meeting, we would love to have your food there. We always try to feed the people because food access is so, so important. So please, if you wanna feed us, we will very much welcome that as well. So literally, anything you can think of, anything you do, you can be helpful.
And it will be appreciated.
Very much so, you know, private business, whatever, you can do it, you can help in whatever way you can. And so I think that's the biggest thing, especially with the Anti-Displacement Summit. It's not just for like you to learn and for you to get educated, but for you to learn like where you can be activated at. And you'll be surprised by what you learn and what space you can plug into.
So many different organizations that is in collaboration with it, right? And so last year, it was like really beautiful to me, although I wasn't able to be there in person, I was like one of the main people who planned it. And so I believe it was like fifteen different organizations that collaborated with each other in the space of the day. And what was beautiful to me about it, right, is that it showed me what Buffalo's community looks like in so many different capacities, right? It's not just one color, it's not one shade, it's not one race, it's not, like, everyone's not American. And what I really loved that we mantraed is that, like, yes, the twenty twenty-two blizzard happened, and it took so many lives, R I P, right? And I was so grateful to see a community march to City Hall and put, like, their hearts and souls into grieving with their community.
And that was a community request that you immediately, everyone responded to, like, this resonates, we have to get this done, and that came together in a few days, like, you know what I mean? And it was so powerful. It was so powerful.
Every person that was directly impacted by that storm, they felt empowered. And they felt empowered by their community, not by city council, not by the politicians. They felt empowered by people like you and me. And that felt amazing. You know what I mean? Just to give them a space to let them know that we love you.
And sometimes you just need that space. Like, yes, we're trying to enact change, yes, we're trying to do this work, but sometimes we just need that safe understanding space of level setting, like, okay, I'm safe with you, I don't have to put on, I don't have to do. Like, I can just be here, and I can tell you about my bad week and who said something that was crazy, and I wish that this person would get the heck out of, you know, and I can say all that. I think a lot of the times, especially when you have to, you know, run a business, or you have a certain job, you have certain obligations, you can't move that way. And so having these true community-built spaces is really important because if we're not real about our politics, then what, what's the point?
What are we real about?
What are we real about? And this impacts all of our lives. We have to be real. I'm tired of stifling it. I can't, like, we have to be real. And so I'm so happy we can have spaces like this one.
And I feel that with you. Like, I feel that sense of community. I feel like I can be real with you, like, today, like, I'm very relaxed. I'm having a very relaxed conversation with a friend, a colleague, a community member, an organizer. You wear so many hats, and I'm giving you your props, and you do a really good job at, like, creating a space where people can talk to you and, like, really be real. And sometimes, like, people need that space to truly talk about what they need. You know? And thank you for doing that.
Oh, thank you so much for that beautiful honor. I'm so awkward all the time when people try to thank me. But, um, but that's really like what I said about media advocacy, like, we have to be real. That's my thing. And for me, no shade, that's what's missing from media. And I think that's what lets the narrative come in of like, you know, lies and the media's whatever, and this and that. And the media is evil because we have sanitized it in a way where we can't be real. And like, sometimes real is ugly, sometimes real is raunchy, sometimes real is ratchet, sometimes real is, and that's fine. That's fine. And so let's just be that. And that's my thing. And, you know, and whoever you are, cuz maybe you aren't raunchy or ratchet or any of those things, that's fine. Maybe you are more the NPR. We can do that. We can do all of that. But there has to be spaces for all of those voices and all of those feelings. And there currently hasn't been that space for everyone to come, like you said, as they are truly. Because when you really do community work, people are gonna come in that are experiencing houselessness, that don't have, don't have any clean clothes or haven't taken a shower in a week, or don't have access, right? And you can't be like, you can't come into this space because you don't have on this, or you, you know, whatever. No.
I think for me, eh, even as an individual, right? I work at ECMC. And so that's the county hospital, so we can never say no to a patient. Every patient is welcome. Right? So regardless of if you're homeless, regardless of your situation, we have to welcome you, and we have to take care of you. And that's why I think community is so important, because I think all the spaces that I put myself in, even both personally, professionally, voluntarily, all of the spaces are engaging with community. And like, it's doing work to aid this city in ways that it's, it stifles in many times and many ways. And so if you are out there and you are interested in being a volunteer, in doing work that is able to aid your city in more ways than one, come to R City Buffalo, come to PPG. Come to R City Action.
And it's completely free, like, you don't have to pay, you don't gotta take a bunch of classes to participate, just come. Like, and you can start wherever, you know, plug in, there's probably an event coming up, like, Leighton said, we have one coming up on that I forgot about. But we gonna be there, so, um, but it's important. We do a lot. Those, we do a lot.
We're always on go, so, like, even if you see us, come say hi.
Literally, and we gonna be there, cuz I know, like, I ran into you, I just ran into you all the time. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. But please, come out, engage, activate, know what's on your ballot, be informed. Please visit R City Buffalo's, um, page because, like Leighton said, they've interviewed candidates. You can get more information in a way that's more accessible to you. You don't have to Google each individual candidate. If you just want a quick snippet, you can find it there.
Like, um, specific profiles for each candidate, so like, what I was reading is from the individual profiles. It has their pictures on it, and like I said, I did the interviews with each individual, so you get to see how they speak. You get to see how they interact with me, for instance, as a real person. Because I literally just like walked up to them after they were onstage, um, answering questions at the public forum. And I was like, I would like to do an interview with each and every one of you. And all of them are like, yeah, why not? Let's do it. Happy that they were open to doing it because sometimes, like, people are more laid back and like, no, I need to, like, plan what I'm gonna say. And like, let's reschedule, like, let's schedule some time to actually do this. No, I want it to be raw, authentic. Let's do it the real way, right? You're not gonna be prepared for my question. I don't want you to be prepared for my question, actually. I want to see what your real response will be. And so you know that the Board of Education will be on your ballot, six candidates, you have three to pick, right? It's three at-large seats. You have proposal one that is on your ballot, you're voting yes.
Vote yes.
What else? You know, you're voting for president, but again, like, down-ballot races and local elections are super important. And that's really where you can make real change in your city. I'm not saying that the presidential race isn't important, that's far from what I'm saying because it really is. But at the same time, local elections are just as important.
And it impacts you more directly. That's the thing, like, a lot of people look for local standards and municipality jurisdiction for a presidential election, not knowing that the president's ain't gonna do that, but your city council member is. Your mayor is.
Person you can get in contact with. Person you can like, oh, I have a leak in my house, or I have asbestos, or I have lead. That's who you're calling directly. And so it's important for you to not only engage with them, hold them accountable, but it's important for you to vote.
Vote. And I'mma have my friend Leighton on here again next year because this election's important. But next year, if y'all don't know, we're voting for a mayor as well. So please, be engaged. Listen to the public good. We are here every week. Um, and so we're so excited to continue to bring partners to you to talk about what your rights are, what's on your ballot, what's going on in your community. And if you ever wanna talk about what's going on in your community, feel free to comment on the video. Reach out to us, email us, call us, um, and at info at ppgbuffalo.org. You can email any comments or topics you'd like to see us discuss on the show, or if you wanna be on the show. Please reach out, info at ppgbuffalo.org. Thank you so much, Leighton, for being with me here today.
For having me, it's like a pleasure to be the first in this space. Absolutely adore the space. It's really beautiful in here, authentic space. And I like that. I like that sense of community sometimes, and like, there's a real plant in here, like, I just.
That's why, I'm like, I'm trying to end the show, but I could literally sit here and talk all day cuz you know how our people are, but I'm really gonna wrap it up. I really appreciate, once again, shout out to the Pod Hub Agency. Thank you so much, Jamil, so much for hosting us. And we will see you again next week on the Public Good. Thank you so much.